This motion was approved. Now I would like to move to the approval of the minutes from the January twenty eighth meeting. I never received the minutes, so. Um, Ms. Tama, did you have the minutes from the last meeting?
Hi, President Langston, they were included in the, uh, package that was sent out yesterday in the email.
Okay.
One of them here. Oh, thank you.
I will accept the motion to approve the minutes. All in favor of approving minutes say aye, all opposed say nay.
You need a motion, you need a motion, someone to make the motion.
How do I say that?
So someone says, I move approval of the minutes, and someone else will say I support.
Okay.
I move approval of the minutes.
And who made, who was that? So Ms. Hodges made the motion and it was supported by?
J. Ross Simmons.
Okay, just for note-taking purposes, so we can be clear, now you can ask for your vote.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor of approving minutes, please say aye, all opposed say nay.
So first you do the, first you get your ayes.
Okay, all in favor of so, of approving minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
All in favor, all, all opposed, please say nay.
Okay, or does anyone wish to abstain? So you had no nos, and you had no abstentions, so your motion carries.
Okay, the motion was carried. Now I would like to move to C, which is unfinished business, and I believe that there is nine. So now I would like to move to the new business. And one, which is the president's report. I'm, I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to hear about the update on the Youth Mental Health Committee, which is led by our vice president. So I'd like to move to C, to two, which is the vice president report update on Youth Mental Health Committee.
Alright, so I spoke to each group, which was the Education Resource and Peer Counseling Committee, and it seems like every group has a clear direction, or at least a good idea of where they want to go in. So first, starting for the resource team, um, they want to plan to do like a pamphlet type of thing, and they want to post one to two times a week with different resources. And they would also like to use our social media to do a spotlight, um, type of thing, where we research one organization per week and we shout them out. And the pamphlet would, uh, consist of all the different resources. So the education team, they said that they would like to do a town hall virtual meeting with a, um, guest speaker, and they would also like to post, um, information in regards to mental health on our social media platforms as well. And for the peer counseling team, that's just that bit. Um, and for the peer counseling team, they want to see who would like to receive peer counseling and, uh, receive training, and they, and we also think, and they also think, um, we should, we should teach about it and, um, talk to schools about it as well.
Thank you, Vice President, and now I would like to move to three, which is a presentation by.
Gabrielle, this is, uh, Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Howard, hi, I'm, I'm sorry to, to interrupt, I, I just, uh, came out of the, of funeral. So I'm sorry, I'm late, I have to apologize for that. But we, I had a guest, uh, speaker that we wanted to speak very briefly, uh, Ms. Blackwell. Uh, is she on the line? I don't know if you were aware of Ms. Blackwell speaking.
Um, I believe she is on the line.
Okay, Ms. Blackwell?
Yes, Commissioner McCormick.
Oh, yes, great, great. So if you, if you don't mind, um, Madam President, if she could just give a, a brief overview of, of what, uh, her agency does, and she's going to introduce her. She will be, uh, and their agency will be able to help, uh, in some of the areas that, uh, you all are seeking to improve upon in, in the mental health area. So go right ahead, uh, Ms. Blackwell.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you so much, Commissioner McCormick, uh, Madam Chair, thank you so much. Um, again, uh, I'm Brooke Blackwell, I'm the Chief of Staff at the Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network. Um, we provide services to about seventy-five thousand individuals, um, throughout Wayne County. Um, those are individuals, um, adults and children with mental illness, substance use disorder, um, intellectual and developmental disabilities, um, persons with autism, um, and children with, uh, serious and emotional disturbances. Um, we have various resources from, um, dealing with persons with depression, anxiety, bullying, dating violence, uh, you name it, suicide, uh, persons dealing with suicide, suicide, um, ideations, you name it. Um, quick question, uh, you don't have to raise your hand or take a poll, but, um, we've done various town halls, um, within, uh, DPS CD, within Wayne Metro. Um, if I had to ask what the number one drug of choice was amongst adolescents, young people, um, I would get answers from the gamut, but the number one drug of choice amongst adolescents, it's actually alcohol. Um, and dealing in this COVID environment right now, we have lots of young people that are dealing with, um, various forms of everything from depression, anxiety. Um, and we work with lots of our schools right now. Um, we have various counselors, um, working, um, in our schools. Um, some of the, uh, assessments that we've done, um, in serving those students in schools. Sixty per two, sixty-two percent of students, um, experience symptoms of depression. Fifty-six percent experience anxiety. And I know I'm just some, some, oh, someone's old mom spouting out facts and figures, so I'm going to give you guys, uh, an opportunity to write down some phone numbers. So take this opportunity, grab your phones, because I'm going to give you guys some resources to jot down, that'll be, uh, advantageous to you guys. Um, sixty-five percent, um, have heard students being called mean names. Um, seventy-one percent have heard rumors or lies spread about others. Thirty-three percent, um, have either witnessed someone, um, or know someone who's been a victim of domestic violence, either themselves, someone in their household. Um, sixty-one percent have seen classmates get pushed, hit, or punched. Um, fifty-one percent of individuals have heard others being threatened. And thirty-one percent of young people, I'm talking about people in the ages between eight and seventeen, thirty-one percent of individuals, um, between ages of eight and seventeen, have had some sort of suicidal ideations. We're talking about self-harm, suicidal thoughts. Um, and twenty-three percent have had serious, have ser, have seriously contemplated suicide. I mean, those are dramatic figures when you talk about, I mean, these are, I have two teenagers, I have a fourteen-year-old and a seventeen-year-old. And it's difficult for me, as a mom, um, when I know that, um, I know that my son and my daughter, they'll feel more comfortable talking to their friends, and they'll feel more comfortable talking to me. Um, so I talked about numbers that I want to give you guys. Two phone numbers. Um, so write this, write these nu, these numbers down. One eight hundred, two four one, four nine four nine. Eight hundred, two four one, four nine four nine. That is a toll-free number that anyone can call in Wayne County. You can actually call anywhere in the state of Michigan, and they will direct you to services in Wayne County, um, to get access inside the behavioral healthcare system. Um, you don't have to have insurance, you can have insurance, um, but it is a number to get access to any type of behavioral healthcare services. There is also a number, um, and I just lost it, all my notes here, see what happens when you try to have too many notes? No, no, nobody's perfect. Um, there's a, a text, a, a text number that I'm going to give you. Um, you can call this number, text this number, um, because I know not everybody's like me, and everybody's tech savvy now. Um, there is a twenty-four-seven text line. Um, this text number is, is still toll-free, it's eight five five, nine six six, three three one three. Eight five five, nine six six, three three one three. And Tamara, Commissioner McCormick, I will share these numbers with you, um, so you guys can send it to anyone that's not part of this, uh, town hall this evening. But, um, that text number, um, you can text that number if you guys have questions, if you know someone that may be in trouble, or just need someone to talk to. Um, because a lot of the times, the issues surrounding, um, mental health services is that someone will say, oh, you know what, I'm not depressed, I don't have anxiety, I just, I'm just having a bad day. Um, text the number, call the number, and they just, sometimes somebody just needs someone to talk to, that's not a forty-five-year-old mom like myself. Um, and you have people that are answer that line, that will just say, you know what, just call this number, they'll give you some resources, they'll give you some people to talk to, um, that can kind of point you in the right direction without having that, that fear, or shame, or guilt, um, of, of being judged. Last but not least, um, actually, two more things before I go. Um, a website, Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network, that's where I work. Um, Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network, if you go to our website, dwin.org. Um, D-Win is the largest, uh, behavioral health organization in the state of Michigan. Um, some of you guys may be familiar with like the Children's Center, um, Northeast Guidance Center, and a neighborhood service organization, those are all organizations that are fall underneath our umbrella. Um, if you go to our website, you can take a free ninety-second online, totally anonymous, um, mental health screening. You can go to it right now, the online screening, it'll ask you like a battery of questions. How old are you, what's your, are you male, female, do you live with both parents? Do you, does anyone in your household drink, smoke, have you ever witnessed any type of violence? Um, and it'll give you an idea of if you're battling some sort of depression, anxiety, bipolar disorder, just to kind of give you a sense of what's going on. Um, do you have a counselor in your school that you can talk to? Do you have anybody in your house that you can talk to? Do you have food in your home? All these things, I mean, sometimes, sometimes something as simple of as not having food in your home, that's actually, not having food in your home is actually a form of trauma. Never thought about that. Living in a home where you don't have three meals a day is, is a form of trauma. Um, and there, there's resources out there that can help you. And there's free resources that we provide, um, that a lot of people don't know about. Um, so go to the website, again, dwin.org, you can take the free assessment, again, it's totally, totally, totally anonymous. You don't have to put your name, your, nothing like that pops up. Um, so I gave you guys two phone numbers, I gave you guys a website. Um, last thing, if you go on our website, we have a group called Youth United. It's similar to the, um, the youth council that you guys are all part of right now. Youth United is open to anyone in Wayne County between the ages of fourteen and twenty-five. Um, Youth United, um, we offer, um, participation in trainings on a statewide and national level. Um, we offer, I mean, it's public speaking skills, but we offer an, an opportunity for, um, young people such as yourselves to work with great people like Commissioner McCormick. We go to Lansing, and we offer an opportunity to, for young people to speak on behalf and create policies that affect other young people. So basically, exactly what you're doing right now, um, it's all about young people taking care of young people, because no one knows what you need to be doing, and no one can speak for you better than you. Um, I can't tell Jevon, and Jay, and Alexa, what you guys need more than what you guys need. So that, that's, I think that's all I have to say in a nutshell, but I'm open to questions, um, if you guys have the time.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell, I know that that information and the many resources that you gave to us will help many, including myself, to just reach out if we have any questions or concerns, so thank you. So if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask.
I have a question.
Certainly.
Um, so can you repeat some of the statistics you mentioned?
Um, I tell you what, because I, I did spout out a lot, a lot, I will, um, send all the, um, the stats that I put out there, along with the, um, the email and.
Yeah, if you would just, um, Ms. Blackwell, if you could just send it to, to, uh, to my office, and then we'll share it with them. And, uh, you can also, if you want to put the phone numbers in the chat area, I don't know if you're on your phone or on, uh, Zoom, but if you can, you can put, put the phone numbers in, in the chat area.
Sure, certainly will.
Okay. But yes, we will share all of the information, the great information, um, so that you can use it to produce, um, and create your resolution.
Absolutely, happy to help.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Anytime.
Now I would like to move to three, which is the presentation by Commission Counsel Felicia Johnson on creating a resolution.
Good evening, everyone, how are you guys this evening?
Great, how are you?
Uh, so I am Felicia Johnson, I am the attorney for the Wayne County Commission. Um, and I advise the commission with regards to, uh, legal matters. Um, one of my job duties includes, um, preparing resolutions. So this evening, I'm going to speak to you briefly about, um, preparing a resolution. Ultimately, um, when you all, when this body makes a recommendation to the Wayne County Commission, you will pass a resolution to make that recommendation. Um, so public bodies, uh, when, in which this is a quasi-public body, when they act as a group and they want to take action, a lot of times what they do is they pass a resolution. And that resolution then can be distributed, um, to the various parties, um, that it's applicable to, such as the Wayne County Commission, and that resolution will speak to exactly what action this body has taken and what action this body is seeking. Um, so in the end, when you all make your recommendation with regards to your mental health initiative, you will do so by the da, adoption and passage of a resolution. So when we think about, um, adopting a resolution and drafting a resolution, one of the first things you need to do is to know your topic, right? We have to know exactly what we're going to write about and exactly what we're doing. So in this case, I'll use, for example, that your topic is mental health with regards to teens. Um, and that's a very broad topic. So what you may find is that you may want to narrow your focus down to something like, and I'm just throwing things out there, this is not me suggesting that this is what you do, but this is just me giving you an example of how you would formulate a resolution. And if at any time anyone has questions, feel free to stop me so that I can answer those questions. Um, if I don't hear, um, anyone stop me, I'm going to just continue to talk until the end. Um, so again, we'll think about our general topic, in this case, your general topic is mental health with regards to teens. And then we want to potentially narrow that topic, because that is a very broad topic, as you all had discussed in one of your pre, previous meetings. Um, so maybe you narrow that topic down to example for something like suicide. And suicide, and how can you address suicide with teens using peer groups? So maybe that's your narrow focus. So the first thing you need to do, once you know your topic, is you need to gather information. So then you're going to research your general topic, to get some general information and statistics regarding mental health in teens. And then you're going to research, um, the narrow topic, which in this case, I'm using as example is suicide in peer groups. Then you're going to research that topic and find as much information as you can regarding that topic, um, so that you can prepare your resolution. Now, a few tips about gathering information. You want to gather entire documents, because you're going to need that entire document, because you're going to want to cite potentially your sources of information, which will bolster the credibility of your resolution. So when you're gathering information, don't just pull sentences from here or there, from different websites, make sure that you pull the entire documents and websites, that way, when you go to draft, you'll have all the information you need to completely draft, um, the resolution that you're looking at. And also, when you're reading and you're researching, especially when you're doing computer research, sometimes, um, you'll do keyword searches, and I know they're going to talk about research later, so I'm not going to get too deep into this, but you may want to highlight that information, that way, when you go back to actually draft your resolution, you don't necessarily need to read every sentence or line, but you'll have certain passages and areas highlighted, and that'll pull your focus to exactly what information you need from every documented source that you have. So those are just a few tips. So again, we've determined our topic, we've narrowed our topic down to a reasonable scope, if we've done our research and gathered our information. So now we're going to sit down and we're going to write our resolution. Resolutions generally, generally have two, um, sort of divisions or parts. The first part, we call them whereas clauses. And a whereas clause is your general background information, that's where you set forth all of your general background. The second part is a resolved clause. The resolved clause or clauses are the actual official actions of the body. This is where you make your actual request. So I sent Gacknee, the clerk, a few examples, which can be distributed to you all, um, as examples, so you'll have them when you actually start to prepare. Um, so some of this information, you don't necessarily need to write down now, um, because you'll have, uh, examples, um, for you to assist you, to sort of guide you. Okay, so we're sitting down, we're going to draft our resolution, we know our resolution has two parts. It has our informational background information, and then it has, well, I'm going to call it your effective clauses, you know, the action that you're actually seeking and taking, which is your resolved clause. So the first thing you're going to do, you're going to determine your goal. So what is the message that you're trying to convey? Because that, knowing your goal, is going to help you organize your resolution. So my question to anyone, please feel free to jump in. If I were to ask you with regards to the topic that you all have selected, what is the actual goal? What, what message are you trying to convey? Anyone? Okay, so I'm going to make something up, since everyone is being very quiet. Um, and let's say, the message again is regarding mental health, mental health in teens. Um, so we want to know our goal, we want to know the message that we're trying to convey, because again, that's going to help you organize your resolution. You want to organize your resolution in a manner like a story, you want it to make sense. You want to start off with your main ideal and topic, and then you want it to flow from that point, so when people are reading it, it clearly flows, and they can clearly understand exactly the point that you all are trying to make. So the first thing we're going to do for our ver, very first paragraph, we're going to talk about our main idea, and I know some of this probably sounds familiar to you when you talk about writing in general. What is our main idea? Um, so let's say, for example, we're going to stick with the mental health, let's say the main theme and idea that you're trying to get across to everyone is that mental health in teens is a national health crisis that requires state and local funding for programs to assist teens to cope with mental health. I know that's a broad sort of statement, but let's say that's your overall main ideal and goal that you're trying to address. Mental health in teens is a national health crisis that requires state and local funding for programs. Okay, so if that's my topic, that's my idea, so my very first paragraph is going to state that, because that's what you're trying to accomplish, so when people read it, they know exactly what they're looking at and what's about to happen. So now what you have to do in your, your next paragraphs, you have to then support and explain your topic, your main topic. So if our main ideal and topic is mental health in teens is a national healthcare crisis that requires funding, then what you're going to do is talk about why is it a national healthcare crisis? Because you just made a statement, right? You just made a statement that it's a national healthcare crisis. So now you need to explain why it's a national healthcare crisis. So your next three or four or five paragraphs will explain why you all think it's a national healthcare crisis. So then you go back to your basis, who, what, when, where, why, and how. So why is it a national healthcare crisis? Now you're going to look at your research, you're going to start pulling out information that talks about why it's a national healthcare crisis. You're going to start pulling out statistics, um, to show the rates, right? The rate of suicides potentially, the rate of deaths, the rate of attempts, the rate of, you know, the number of teens, percentage of number of teens who have determined and just said that they, um, contemplated suicide even though they haven't tried it. So now we're going to talk about the why is it a national healthcare crisis, we're going to talk about who does it impact? Does it impact a certain age group? Does it impact a certain ethnic group? Does it impact a certain gender? So now again, you're pulling out statistics from your research to support the statement that you made, which is that it's a national healthcare crisis. So we'll go through the who, the what, the wins, you know, is it a certain time of year? Is it certain seniors versus, you know, sophomores? Um, when people, when young teens, you know, commit suicide, you know, is it related, somehow related to sports and activities at school, homecoming, or prime? And people, you know, maybe they don't have dates, they get depressed. Um, so you'll pull out all of the information from your research to support your main idea. So you'll have several paragraphs supporting your main idea. Now, the second part of our main idea, if we stick with our main idea, which again is mental health in teens is a national healthcare crisis that requires state and local funding, so for programs, so then we're going to transition into the second part of our main idea and explain why we need programming, and what type of programming is available. So again, you go back to your research, your research to su, support your main idea, so then you'll lay out the who, what, when, where, and why, and talk about programs, talk about the type of programs, talk about the effectiveness of the programs. And ultimately, in the end, your last whereas clause, we'll sort of pull it all together, right? We're going to have a wrap-up. So after we talked about and set forth, I'm, set forth the main idea, we support that main idea, we put in statistics, when you put in statistics, you want to support it, you just don't want to throw things out in the universe. So if you cited a news article from the New York Times, or from some mental health journal, then you're going to, you're going to cite the source of, um, where you got that information from in your resolution. Because what happens is that when you all pass that resolution on to the commission, or whether you pass that resolution on to school boards, so that they can implement your program, you want it to have a level of validity, right? So in order to have a little of, level of validity, we want to support it, so people know we're not just making this up. So that's why I indicated to you before, that when you print your research, you want to make sure that you have all your source documents and information. So we're going to support our statistics, we're going to, um, put in statistics, and we're going to tell the source of those statistics, and I'm sure as, as seniors and high school, um, students, you all have done this before in papers, so it's, it's very similar to what you've already done before, and which you know. But you always, you are, you always want to support the information that you're, um, putting forth. So once you do that, you support your main idea, you have your who, what, when, how, you've explained why you think that it's a national healthcare crisis, you've explained the programming, um, you've explained the statistics related to the programming, and why programming is effectiveness, and you can have statistics to support that as well. Then you want to have a general wrap-up statement, to, you know, say something like, um, and I'm going to just make something up. Um, you know, because of all the information and facts, and, you know, the, the trans, the teens, um, the importance of teens and families, that, you know, it's important that this issue be addressed or something. You'll have some type of general wrap-up statement before you get to your actual resolved clauses. So what I normally do is I write all my whereas's, and then I take a step back. Remember, we're telling the story. In order to convey the message, we want to make sure that it flows. So now you may want to play with it, reread it. Maybe you want to move some of your cl- your um, paragraphs around so that it flows and that it conveys the message that you're trying to get across. And once you're happy with the flow, then you have to make sure you have transitional statements. We don't want to do, we don't want to have abrupt changes in topics. We want to make sure that they transition. So when you transition from talking about the national healthcare crisis to talking about the programming, make sure that first sentence is some type of transitional sta- statement that helps flow from one topic to the next. So once you do that, then you'll talk about your resolve clause. And your resolve clause is is what you're seeking. So if you're preparing your resolution and you're going to submit it to the Wayne County Commission, you can make a statement in one resolve clause that says that you all have declared and researched and determined that um, mental health in teens is a national crisis that, of a public health crisis that needs to be addressed. You could then make a request, you know, you then you resolve that we ask the Wayne County Commission to do something. Again, what are you trying to accomplish? If you're trying to get programming into schools, then you say that um, maybe you send it to school districts and you all encourage school districts to implement a certain program. Maybe you recommend a certain program, right? So you have to, whatever you're seeking to do in the end, that's what you put in your resolve clauses. We we make this recommendation, we make this request. Um, we ask that you implement this program. Those are the type of items that go in your resolve clauses. Because again, the document itself is what you're sending off to hopefully get the program that you want implemented. It's the document that you're going to send to the commission. It may be the document that may get sent to some school boards or to some principals. So when they look at it, you have to make your case, you have to explain why it's important, but then you have to make sure you make a request. So it has to be something in the resolve clauses. This is what we need. In order to save lives, you know, we implore that you must implement uh, peer groups, teen counseling. Because it's, you know, statistically, it saves lives and lives of teens, it obviously is important. So you have to make the case and make an argument in your resolve clauses as to what you're asking and what you're seeking. And that's the basic format of how and what you should do and think about when you're drafting a resolution. Again, I did provide the clerk with a few um, samples that they'll get to you all, so you'll have them. But I'm a pause right now for anyone to ask me any questions regarding the drafting of a resolution. No one, not one question? Okay, so if there are no questions for me, that's all I have.
Well, if there is no questions for Miss Miss Felicia, thank you so much. That was really helpful for us as we will be working on our resolution. So thank you again for breaking all the steps down so we can really better understand the concept. So now I would like to move forward to four, which is presentation by Chris Alchabert and Joe Suzak of the Department of Policy Research and Analysis on How to Research.
Hello, everyone. My name is uh, Chris Albrecht, or you can call me Mr. Albrecht. Uh, it's nice to meet you all this evening. So my uh, coworker, my fellow policy analyst, uh, or legislative research analyst, Mr. Slazak and I will share a uh, presentation with you all on how we do our research for uh, contracts and uh, mostly contracts, but other items that come before the uh, commission.
And then we can also talk about um, afterward, because I was kind of brainstorming about some of the different um, you know, some of the different resources that that you guys can tap into while you're working specifically on this project. So, so I guess, you know, Chris is going to lead off with the um, with what we do. And then we can kind of go toward the um, you know, the the different ways, different places you can go. So.
Sherrell, are you hosting?
Gagnit is hosting.
Gagnit is hosting? Gagnit, um, would you mind allowing me to share?
No problem, Chris.
Thank you. Well, I have one second here.
So again, the slides that Chris is going to show actually walks you through how we do what we do. And as Joe indicated, we will actually throw out some reference areas or where you all can go for your specific mental health topic.
Right. Uh, so here we go with the first slide, Wayne County Commission. Uh, again, our our names and our titles. Uh, some words here to get you thinking about uh, what we do for the commissioners. Uh, and next slide is.
Can you go back to that slide? I'm sorry, Chris, I'm good to interject here. Those are all important concepts when it comes to researching. So you, if there are any applicable laws, you want to know if there are any requirements for what you're trying to do, any rules? It, are there any areas that you need to make sure that you're being compliant in? So those are all key words when it comes to research.
And if any of you have any questions, uh, you know, I think you can feel free to interject and we can try to further explain what we're talking about. Also, we'll take questions uh, at the end. Uh, so just a short biography about me. I graduated and there's a picture of me, so you can see what I look like. I graduated uh, from Sterling High Steven Stevenson High School in two thousand and seven. I got an associate's from McComb Community College in December of two thousand and ten. Uh, took me a while to get my bachelor's in May two thousand and sixteen, but I got it. It's in public affairs, which is similar to public policy, which if you're interested in pursuing a career um, in government or politics, um, public, a public affairs or public policy degree is a good idea. It would teach you just, you know, about the basic uh, ways in which government functions. It would make you, you know, more suitable for that uh, career choice if you're interested. Um, and uh, I got a uh, job for a while as a graduate student assistant at the Center for Urban Studies, where I worked in the uh, urban health and uh, early childhood and disabilities programs. And I basically assisted um, a couple of directors of the program, a couple of professors who worked there with evaluating uh, some state programs. Um, I think one of them was called MSEM, which stands for Michigan Special Education Mediation Program, where, you know, um, I I believe money was being given, you know, grant money to uh, schools uh, to implement uh, restorative justice programs, you know, to avoid or or to lessen the amount of suspensions and expulsions, especially as it relates to uh, children with disabilities who may, you know, at times have a harder time even than some pe- people without or students without disabilities resolving differences and avoiding things like uh, suspension and expulsion. But that gives you an idea of what I did there. Uh, and then also, at the same time, these jobs are both part-time at the time. So I was working as a legislative staff intern for Michigan State Senator Steve Bida. And uh, as it relates to the previous presentation by uh, Ms. Johnson, our commission counsel, that's actually where I got a lot, lot of my initial experience learning how to write uh, resolutions. Um, well, a lot of the ones that I was writing sometimes too, in fact, were more so, you know, uh, statement oriented. They didn't necessarily always have some sort of um, lawmaking impact. They were more like, you know, the the Senate agrees that this is an important statement and and we we uh, agree to, you know, make it an official part of the uh, record. Uh, so I worked on uh, stuff like that. Some of it was a tad um, political in nature. Uh, for example, uh, one of them was to uh, you know, demand, and this was, as you can tell, back in two thousand and seventeen. This was at the time to demand that uh, Trump, uh, you know, our former president Trump um, follow the uh, I guess, practice of previous presidential candidates and or presidents and um, you know, provide his tax returns for the public to examine. So that's an example of a resolution. Again, more of a political resolution in nature. They're not always so political, but that's an example of a resolution I wrote there. And then um, in July of two thousand and seventeen, that's when I started my job here as a legislative research analyst for the Wayne County Commission. So going on about three years now. And in May twenty of eighteen, I earned my master's degree in public administration from Wayne State University. And again, if you're looking to go into government or politics, but especially government, if you're looking to be a bureaucrat like me or uh, Ms. Johnson or my director, uh, Ms. Mrs. Fordham, um, that can always be a great uh, degree to get. Uh, that's abbreviated often as an MPA, which is similar to an MBA, which is a master's in business administration. The difference here is that the public administration is focused on, you know, serving the public. So you're either in the public sector like government or you're working for a nonprofit organization. Whereas business administration, you know, is typically more focused on, you know, a for-profit uh, enterprise. But otherwise, they still cover many of the same things in terms of dealing with um, personnel and human relations, uh, communication, uh, and uh, you know, stuff like that, research. Uh, and I'll I'll go to the next slide and I'll let Joe uh, describe his biography, or Mr. Slazak rather.
Yeah, you can call me Joe, that's fine. Um, I actually, I've been with the commission, it's actually, next week will be uh, seven years. I spent uh, two years, first two years, a little over two years in public information. And then I've been um, in my current position for, you know, close to five years. I um, actually have a media background, as you see there. I initially started in radio and I move, eventually moved into, I got a, my degree from Eastern is from in telecommunications film. And I moved into newspapers. Once I graduated, I decided not to go into radio, which was my background. I went into newspapers instead. And it basically just, a sense of curiosity, I've always kind of been curious, um, you know, learning about a lot of different things, you know, open your mind to learn about a lot of different things, you know, be, don't be afraid to ask questions, you know. To just, just basically just learn what what makes things go, I guess. And asking the questions and, you know, a sense of curiosity, I think, will serve all of you well, especially with this, you know, knowing who to ask the questions of and knowing what questions to ask. And also, you know, writing background, obviously, you know, radio and um, and newspapers are two very different types of writing. But the concept of being a reporter is still the same. And, you know, just basically just keep your mind open to that. I don't know if any of you are from, you know, Western Wayne County, where I don't know if you've ever heard of uh, radio station WSDP in the Plymouth Canton community. That's um, that's where I got my start, you know, during high school radio. I was a, when I was a student at Canton and, you know, the stu- the radio station is actually at Salem High School, but it's all one campus. That's where I got my start. I was in in the ninth grade when I uh, when I got my journalism, my my, basically my media start. And then from there, um, as you know, newspapers, you know, the the industry is struggling, you know, it hasn't really figured out how to harness the internet. You know, harness money from the internet. And so I decided to, um, when an opportunity came to come to the commission, I did. And the chairman of the commission at the time, you know, Gary Warrencheck, he actually was my fir- one of my first editors that I had. So when I came down, I'm, I basically, I came out of the commission. It's um, it was the second time in my career I'd worked for him. So that that's what kind of drew me down there and I'm very happy to be where I'm at right now. I really enjoy what I do, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Slazak. Uh, here is a map of the county for reference, just to remind us of what it looks like and where it's at and some of the communities that it encompasses. Of course, the city of Detroit.
And the thing is that we do contracts, that we basically, we're dealing with issues from all over the county. You know, not just, you know, not just one part of the county, not just another part of the county. We we deal with stuff with with different topics and different vendors and whatnot from just all over the place. And we serve the entire county. You know, all there are forty-three municipalities in Wayne County, thirty-four cities and nine townships. And we we basically deal with them all.
Yes, absolutely, great point. And so these next few slides will kind of take us through uh, our actions and thought processes uh, for analyzing contracts. Uh, so a contract is submitted to the commission for approval by the administration. It could be coming uh, from the Health, Human and Veteran Services Department. It could be coming from the sheriff's office, the prosecutor's office, and that kind of leads us into our next bullet, which is, well, which committee does the contract go to? Um, I believe, I believe there are some, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mrs. Fordham or Mr. Slazak, but I believe there are also some rules that guide us uh, to that. Generally, uh, i- i- it's it's apparent based on like, let's say, you know, the public services uh, engineering division is requesting uh, professional engineering services uh, for the reconstruction of Rotunda Bridge, then we would know, well, this goes to the committee on public services because it's coming from the public services uh, department. But I believe there are also rules that are written that help us uh, discern when maybe it's not that clear. Oh, okay.
Yep, exactly, yep.
So. Uh, and then is it a high priority? Uh, you know, is it something that uh, needs to be turned around quickly? Because the term start date uh, is coming up and the commission needs to approve it before the term begins so that the money uh, can be uh, given to the vendor and the vendor can begin performing services. That could be an example of immediate consideration. Retroactive, uh, that's a a situation where um, uh, if the, if the contract has been submitted to the commission for approval, uh, i- uh, the term start date is coming up soon. So we need to really make sure that we get it to committee uh, or work out any issues that there are with the department. Of course, we have to figure out what the contract's for, uh, how much it costs or how much uh, we're receiving from the contract. If it's a grant, uh, there's a term for the contract. Some contract terms run a fiscal year, some uh, commence upon commission approval for one year or two years or three years. Sometimes there's options to renew. There may be one, two-year option to renew or two, one-year options to renew. And then we want to see if all the required information has been provided. Uh, we rely on documents like the procurement ordinance, other ordinances, the county charter to remind us of what information the uh, administration is supposed to be providing in their requests for contract approval. Uh, we consult the commission's resolution index for a history of contracts with the same vendor or similar vendors for similar services. Uh, we want to make sure that we're not double paying and paying two vendors to provide the same service, for instance. We may look at previous analyses or resolutions uh, for information. Uh, sometimes you have to work your way backwards to figure out how uh, a contract issue was resolved or handled. Um, as a member of the Policy Research and Analysis Department, I work with, and so does Mr. Slazak, commission counsel and the fiscal agency uh, to resolve issues. We talked to the departments and the divisions within the administration. I covered that question at the top there. We often, some of these contract requests are for extensions, oops, extensions or modifications of current contracts. Sometimes the administration is asking for more time and or more money for the vendor to continue providing uh, the service. Um, sometimes these contract packages have to be returned to the department or division for corrections. Uh, you, there may be something within the contract document that is incorrect and has to be changed. That would be one of those instances, perhaps, you know, typically regarding the amount or the term. Uh, and then sometimes, again, getting back to the deadline, are these corrections that uh, would have to be made before committee approval or can they be made between the window of committee approval and full commission approval? And I know that's a lot. Thank you so much for listening. If you have any questions, please feel free.
Thank you.
Or if anyone would like to add anything.
And and then also, just some um, some resources based on what you guys are going toward. You know, basically, your topic is the mental health topic. There are, um, like in Wayne County, a- actually, kind of a funny thought a little bit earlier. You guys have um, the internet. And when I was in high school, when I was your age, the internet really didn't exist. We didn't, you didn't have that resource. And you guys have that, which is such a tremendously valuable resource. And yes, we do some internet research too. I mean, when what, when what, when, when we're um, working on these contracts. And I think par- part of the key, I think, starting points for you guys. Um, Wayne County has a Department of Health, Human and Veteran Services. You can go to WayneCounty.com and look and see, just kind of poke around and see, you know, if there's something that the county offers that can help you. I mean, the the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the US Department of Health and Human Services. I mean, look, look around those official government websites and see if there are, i- i- if there's stuff that can help you there that can help you with what you're trying to do. Another option is the, I mean, D-Win is obviously a great, great resource, you know, that Ms. Blackwell was talking about a little bit earlier. I mean, the county has an excellent relationship with D-Win, you know, Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network. And also, you can also think about um, the local health systems. Like in Wayne County, you know, the primary ones, I mean, this isn't the complete list, but I mean, the Detroit Medical Center, um, Henry Ford Health System, Beaumont Health System, like for example. Like, for example, like when I worked for the New South River, um, Henry Ford Wyandotte Hospital, which is a prominent hospital down river, does have a mental health ward. Um, Beaumont, Beaumont Health System is in the process of building one in Dearborn that is actually close to the, what used to be, we used to call it Oakwood, Maine. Now it's Beaumont, Dearborn. So you can, you know, look around and see what the, um, what the health systems have. You can also, you know, and a plug here for my old career in newspapers, you know, basically run, you know, basically run Google searches and see what sort of newspaper stories you can find. Um, but, but the, the, the key is the warning on that is make sure that it's an unbiased media outlet. I mean, there are some outlets that are tilted one way or the other. You know, papers like the News and the Free Press and the local papers and that, you know, those are, you know, even going all the way up to the New York Times, Los Angeles Times, whatever. I mean, it, it just basically know, you know, it just basically know that this is, work with the mainstream media, basically. And if, you know, you want to reach out to somebody, you know, don't, don't be afraid to reach out to somebody, whether you want to talk to, um, a mental health professional, say, for example, at D-Win or at the, um, Henry Ford or, or Beaumont or whatever the case is. Don't be afraid to reach out because they're there to help. And don't be afraid to ask questions and, um, you know, you're not sure about something, ask. And there, there are just so many wonderful resources, research, resources out there for you that, that you'll be able to use that will most certainly, most certainly help your effort here. And I think it's great what you guys are doing. I really do. So. Any, any questions?
Chris and thanks, Joe. And I just want to throw in, as Joe indicated, the internet is definitely your friend when doing research. And it wasn't always around, but thank God it's here now. It makes life a little easier. And you just want to make sure that you are getting scholarly publications and articles and journals. And there are tons of mental health organizations out there where you can visit their websites also and see what's going on or what information they have there for the public, like the National Alliance on Mental Health, Mental Health America, um, the National Institute of Mental Health, just to name a few. So those are all good reser- resources. And of course, D-Wins, we got the presentation from Ms. Blackwell. It's also an excellent source to go for information.
Can I just add a couple more?
Oh, of course.
Uh, similar to that, Google Books sometimes has, uh, open source, uh, uh, material from scholarly sources, uh, such as journals, research journals, which are peer-reviewed. And then you may find that some colleges have online library access to their books and also have online, uh, access to some open source research journal information, which is peer-reviewed and will have usually some sort of statistical study in it as well. And that can also be a source.
And like, for example, you know, with academics, the University of Michigan, you know, University of Michigan's health system is an outstanding, outstanding resource too. And there are others, I mean, Wayne State's got, you know, got medical school too. And, but yeah, there are a lot of different things. Just make sure that you, you know, that, that you're going to someplace that, that's unbiased, some, you know, mainstream, if you will. And there are a lot of tremendous resources, just basically just know where you're going, basically. But there are so many wonderful resources out there for you. So. Yeah, any questions for anybody or?
I have a question. This is Commissioner McCormick.
Sure.
Um, do you suggest that a resolution be a certain length? Is there a certain standard?
Felicia, I defer to Felicia on that.
Um, so with regards to the length of the resolution, there is no rule with regards to how long it is. Now, I'm a believer in keeping things as short and concise as possible, because you tend to lose people's attention if you make it too long. But you always must make sure that you have all the important information. So my suggestion is that, once you do your research, you determine your topic. Make sure that your resolution includes all of the relevant information and important information and that it conveys the message that you want it to, and just don't add extra stuff to add extra stuff. Um, so there is really no rule with regards to how long. You want it to be complete. You want it to be thorough. You want it to be accurate. You want it to convey the message. Um, you want it to support the message. Um, but you don't want it to be overly long. So you all just have to balance that out. Um, to some extent, once you start writing the resolution, I can make myself available, um, for further questions, discussion, and, you know, some comments with regards to it, once you get to the point of actually having a draft document.
And then also, when going back to my newspaper days, I would have, um, when I was a copy editor, I would have reporters asking, well, how long do you think I should write this story? And I said, I would tell them, write it for what it's worth, as in the length that you think it is. Obviously, don't make it too long. Don't make it flowery. But if you think it should be a certain length, i- i- it should be. You know, do, do what you think is right, basically. I mean, just be, be, as Felicia said, get to the point. But if, you know, r- write it to what you think it's worth.
Great. Thank you for that. And thank you all, uh, for coming to the meeting today. And, uh, Pam, Chris, Joe, Felicia, uh, you all always come to my rescue. And so I really appreciate you, um, spending the time this evening with our young youth council, our, our young people. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank, thank you for inviting us. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Yep.
All right. Gabriel, um, I don't know if you had any, any questions to clarify anything, uh, about the resolution? Because we need to have this done within the next month. And I think that's more than enough time.
Yes. Thank you again to everyone who came out to just speak with us today. You truly did help me as well as I'm pretty sure a lot of the, the youth on here as well. So thank you again. So now I'd like to move to five, which is the Youth Mental Health Resolution, and now be presented to the Wayne County Commission at ten AM on April first. And now I'd like to move. Yes.
So, so, uh, Gabriel, that, this portion of the agenda was for you to, uh, have any discussions that you need about the resolution that will be presented, uh, on April first. Um, and also I wanted to clarify if you guys are going to be out of school on April first. And if you are not, uh, if you can notify us, you could just shoot us an email if you're going to be out of, or if you're not going to be out of school. When we looked at the district map, uh, for Detroit Public Schools, uh, that is the holiday, maybe it was not the holiday, but spring break or some break time for Detroit Public Schools. But the other schools may not be out. So if you could let us know, we may have to make adjustment, uh, to that April first, if the majority of you are not out of school. The commission meetings are at ten AM and we wanted you all to, uh, uh, attend the meeting and present at that April first meeting. So again, if you can notify us if you're not available on April first. And again, this is, uh, a time where you can have to discuss any issues, uh, from your committee, uh, or any questions, or just to discuss the mental health initiative.
Thank you. So you said for the Youth Mental Health Resolution, you would like for us to talk about it?
Right. This was a time for you to discuss the resolution and preparing the resolution. What, um, again, as Felicia just covered, uh, how you, you're going to set up the, uh, the resolution, uh, describing who, what, when, where, how, who's going to do that? Who's going to actually type it up? Who's going to pr- speak or provide the actual presentation? So you want to talk through all of those issues. Um, who's writing the, uh, the, maybe the statistical portion of it? Uh, versus who's coming up with the peer, uh, counseling? If that's where you're going as to suggestions of how you can help young people. You, you just need to talk all of those things through. You don't have to do them all tonight, but I figured you probably need some time to talk about the resolution.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, so in regards to the resolution, was there anyone in particular who wanted to actually type it up? Like the whole resolution after we write it out and discuss it?
Uh, personally, I think that we should all pitch it, especially since it's like different groups with a certain area of focus. So, um, I was thinking that we could just do like a Google Doc and share everybody on it.
So do you think that we should do that as well with the statistics? And did, like, do you think that we should talk about it and discuss it before we write it out instead of people just adding on to the, and, and to the doc?
Yeah, and I was thinking like, what we're doing, where we're on, you know, typing on the document, we should like, honestly have meetings for it. Like, I think we should, we need more meetings to really discuss where we're going and to keep each other updated and to actually type out the document. So, yeah, if you think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I agree with you as well. So when we.
So, um, Isaiah, when we, when we talked, uh, last, uh, I know you had set up most of the meeting and met with, uh, your committee, uh, members. I don't know if you have locked in additional committee meeting dates, so maybe that's something you want to talk about. Uh, maybe you want to come up with some dates now, so everybody is on the same page. And, and then maybe you can shoot them a, uh, link, a Zoom link to, to the meeting, but maybe set the date and times now.
Yeah, that's actually what I wanted to talk about. So, obviously, I think we should use the majority of the month of March to have these meetings and to converse with each other. So, um, I, what, do you guys have any idea of, um, what days would be ideal for you guys?
Um, I know that I personally, um, Mondays through, well, Fridays to Mondays are usually the best times for me, as I have a lot of meetings throughout the week. And I also feel like that will probably be the best time for everyone else because of school. The weekends might be the best time. Um, I know Sundays might not be the best time for some people. But, um, maybe Saturdays. I know last time we had meetings, um, we didn't have a lot of people join because it was a sort of, uh, a last-minute preparation. But if we have a set time, I'm pretty sure everybody will be able to join.
Okay.
I agree. What about?
All I need to do is be notified before. I'm sorry to interrupt, but, yeah.
Um, for me personally, weekends are not good, but Mondays is perfect.
I would say Mondays is a good option.
Um, okay, what about certain time periods? Because I know, uh, a lot of us have extracurricular activities and stuff as well. So if anybody has a certain time period that they think would be best or that, or if there's a certain time period we can agree on, let me know.
Um, usually the evenings, like after four or five o'clock.
I, I think six would be good, just like as a general time where we usually do meetings. Six might be a good time.
Okay, well, that would depend on the day, because, um, Mondays, I'll be able to do six, but I think I could do six-thirty, six-forty-five.
Oh yeah, midnight go off. So yeah, after six-thirty is perfect.
Okay, so it seems like after six-thirty would be a good time for you guys to meet, most of you. Now, we know that everybody, uh, schedule may, may not conform to, to the six-thirty time. But you just need to set a time and a day. And that way, most of you, whoever can meet, can meet at that day and that time. And then you can schedule another meeting from there. So did you say Monday or Saturday at after six-thirty?
Mostly everyone said Monday.
Monday.
Saturdays. Mostly Mondays.
Okay.
I, I have another question.
Go right ahead.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, we want to do this, we want to do this meeting with, uh, everybody together, because last time I did them separately. So do you guys think it's best to do it every, uh, to do all of them together?
Hmm, I feel like it depends. Um, I guess we could have each main, uh, meeting be for separate things, like for each committee. But I feel like separate meetings may be better, because, um, like that gives each, each committee an opportunity to discuss what they need to discuss, instead of everyone coming together and information getting mixed together. So I feel like we could probably spend, it's about what, four Mondays? Then also we could spend each, like, one, doing different committees, and then the last Monday, before the presentation, we can all come together. I feel like that would probably work best.
So this is Felicia, the attorney again. I'mma chime in here. Um, just because you all have this quasi sort of governmental, um, status. And that's why we meet and we post your meetings, um, publicly and we do it in more formal fashion. Um, I'mma need you all not to meet as a whole group altogether, meet in your committees. Um, but the meetings that you meet as a whole group must be done, um, through the, the formal process, um, that we're doing now. Um, just so that we can stay compliant with the law and, and things of that nature. So, uh, please don't meet as a group as a whole with everyone outside of this process, please. But feel free to meet for your committee so that you can, you know, prepare your information and start sharing your Google Doc.
I have a question for everyone. Um, I don't know, well, based on the presentations today, do y'all feel like we should narrow our initiatives? Like, I feel like it might be a little too broad at this point, based on like hearing, um, Ms. Felicia's. So I don't know, do y'all feel like we should like narrow it down some more? Or should, should it just be as broad as it is?
I think that we should narrow it down personally.
I do too. So I can give people a general idea of more of what we want to see and what we want to change.
Right. And I think that we should converse about what exactly we want to narrow it down to and how we're going to use each committee to cover whatever they're doing with that narrowed-down topic. So does anybody have any ideas?
Maybe we should do, um, depression and how schools can affect it, but also how they can prevent it. Um, just because we were already talking about, um, how like school affects different things. And I feel like depression is one of the bigger things that affects teens, like one of the bigger mental health issues that affect teens. So I feel like depression maybe should be the thing that we discuss and do a resolution on.
Yeah, I would say depression and maybe anxiety mixed together, because they kind of always go together. So I feel like those two would be a better topic.
Yeah, I agree. So, so do we want to talk about how like, um, schools directly affected or are affected? Or how schools can do like a better job of tackling these subjects and helping their students? Because I think regardless, school is always going to play a factor, but, um, that's not the case for everybody. It's, uh, outside, uh, reasons too. So do you want to talk about school, um, directly affecting the issue? Or how schools need to do a better job of handling it and offering help to their students?
Hmm, I feel like the second option, because like you say, it can be outside sources. So even if school does. So even if school does prevent it, I feel like there can always be other factors that make it worse or trigger it. So maybe we should do help and maybe, uh, different programs that schools can install to help teen mental health depression.
I think we should start having schools implementing coping programs. So maybe like, they have people who come in and teach people how to cope with it. I think that should be where our focus is at this point. The people who are helping cope, they can kinda go each committee, they can kinda educate them on what it is. They could provide resources to help them with it. And then peer counseling, that would kinda be like that, them talking to them, telling them how to cope. So that kinda goes with all three committees, and we could break it down like that.
To go off of what Morgan said, I believe maybe we could like, narrow it down to like a more individual proposition of, like asking people to find more like serious counselors. Cuz I feel like the counselors that most schools have currently, aren't really like suited, or like, uh, they don't have the necessary like, like, training or responsibility to like be able to handle like real counseling of like, mental health for like young students, like they don't have the requirements. Maybe we could like, start some type of proposition to add like, more legitimate like counselors and like, maybe therapists for like, just to like help aid mental health better.
Uh, I agree with that, I think a lot of counselors, um, they're not necessarily helpful with their students when it comes to mental health. Sometimes it's like, they, I don't wanna say without being offensive or anything, but like, they're not like necessarily qualified for that, or sometimes are honestly just neglectful. So I think that could be an issue that we discuss as well.
Um, another thing I wanted to add it to, I feel like, um, to go off of what you were saying earlier about how, um, things outside of school can affect it. I feel like, um, because school is like such a small amount of time out of the day, even though it is most of our waking hours. We should, um, also suggest that schools provide different programs outside of school. So that they can, um, like when kids aren't in school, or during holidays or weekends, they can always have somewhere that they can talk to. Like, um, the phone numbers and the websites we were talking about earlier, different things like that. But also, just like programs in general, um, and services that teens can use outside of school. I feel like we, that can go in with the resource committee, and that can be something that we, um, research in that committee.
Okay, I think you guys are doing great with narrowing the subject matter down. Tara, Fana, is she on the line?
Yep, I'm right here.
Oh, okay, I, I had, didn't hear from you tonight. Um, I just wanna make sure that you're taking good notes, that so far, you just talked about the subject matter would be depression and anxiety. So that's what you're gonna focus on. And then you're gonna focus on schools, and what schools should have. So the resolution is about depression and anxiety, and how schools can have a impact on students in, in the way in which they treat students with depression or anxiety. Uh, and helping them cope with their depression. Be it peer mentoring programs, or counseling programs, or having better counselors in the school. And then you also said that in the schools, you also want to see uh, resources that are available for them on the outside, or, or when they leave the school. Is that basically what you just covered there? I think that, that's what I just heard.
Yeah, I would agree with what you just said.
Yeah, I'm also taking notes as well, and, um, just to be clear, so, we have all of that. Um, I think we should talk about which committee wants to cover which. Also, Brendan, I would like to know if you wanted to be in a certain committee as well?
Yeah, I would just like to formally introduce myself. I was appointed by Commissioner Raymond Basham and Joseph Palmarra for to represent the fourteenth and fifteenth district, so. What necessarily are the options for like each committees? I know there's a research committee, could you name the other ones?
Yes, so, so far we have the education committee, which is basically like, um, breaking the stigma and, um, talking about educating people, or in this case, schools, about mental health. And then we have the resource committee, which is doing research and providing different, um, resources. And the peer counseling committee, um, honestly, so the peer counseling committee was to basically talk about peer counseling. But I think that we should kind of expand that committee of coping skills as well, peer counseling and coping skills. I don't know if you guys would agree with that, or the peer counseling committee, would you guys agree with that?
Yes.
I think, I think that sounds about right, that all of those kinda go together. Um, peer counseling is, is about making sure that the resources in the schools that is provided, uh, could be the peer counseling, a, a better counselors period. Whether they're your peers or adults. And then some coping program, so yes, those could all be in one category.
Yeah, I think I'd like to join the peer counseling commission, that seems just about right.
Okay, I'll put you down for the peer counseling committee. Also, um, welcome as well.
Okay, I think you guys covered what needed to be covered. Your meeting is, are you having a meeting this coming Monday at six thirty? Is that what we just said?
Uh, well, we-
For, for whatever group, for whatever committee, uh, there's a meeting at six thirty on Monday. So you can decide which, and then just send that communication out.
Um, okay, um, I'll, I'll discuss it in the group chat. And, um, also, so Gabby is talking about joining in the peer counseling group. So do you want the Eboard, well, like me and Gabby in, in the groups as well, or?
Well, you're, as the vice chair, you were kinda overseeing the, the committees. Uh, but Gabrielle should be in a group or part of a group as well, yeah.
Okay, um, so Gabrielle, I need the, I need each committee to kind of be even. So, the peer council group has the most amount of members right now. So would you be interested in joining the education and resource committee as well, or instead?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, and, and then, um, I think Gabrielle, you probably want to be over um, the writing of the document, making sure that, um, you know, that's moving along uh, all of the parts of it. And describing the, the issue, and then how do you, or the issue, and then maybe some statistical information about why this is a problem, and then how you resolve the problem. You wanna make sure that that document is moving forward as it should. Um, and again, there is no standard of length. You just wanna make sure that everything is, uh, that you want covered, is covered in the document. Uh, but I would say that you don't wanna make it too long either. I would say about three to, to five pages, if that. Um, most of our resolutions are, you know, two pages. So it's not, it doesn't, it's, it's just like writing a, a report for school. And it, you don't need to overthink it, um, just what is the problem? And what, why is this a problem, and then this is how we solve the problem. That's all that goes in a, a resolution.
Okay.
So, yeah, so if you can, um, uh, make sure that the document is coming together. Uh, and each, each week, look at what you have, and make sure that it's, it's flowing. Then I think we'll, we'll be, um, in pretty good order. And then the other thing, um, that I just wanted to announce before we get off the phone is that we wanted to have a, um, uh, end of the year event for you guys, where you could get together. And we were thinking of doing it on the River Walk. I talked to the chair, uh, of the commission, Alicia Bell, today. Um, this would be at the end, uh, mid, mid-May. Or towards the end of May. And so I will provide you with more information. We'll also celebrate those that are seniors this year. Um, so I hope you, you guys, uh, look forward to, to that, and you can formally meet each other. And, um, we'll be outside, so we can social distance and all that good stuff uh, uh, on the River Walk, okay?
Okay, that's going to be great, thank you.
Can I say one more thing before we wrap up?
Oh, go right ahead.
All right, so, um, so when you guys are in your separate groups, you guys can, um, I just wanna make sure that you guys are meeting. Still, like, um, my job is to kinda like oversee and check in with you guys and to be updated. But you guys can still meet with your groups on your own and work on it. And also, is it okay if they make separate group chats with their groups? I just wanna make sure I'm not breaking any rules.
That's fine.
Okay, so, um, yeah, you guys can still meet and discuss with each other in your own personal groups. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure you guys, um, were aware of that.
I had a question about that. I'm not sure of everyone who was on the resource team. So, would it be okay if you could provide a list of the names, so that I can make a group chat?
Yes, and I can send that in our main one too, so all of you guys can do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Gabrielle, you can take the meeting over again.
Okay, thank you, so now I'd like to move over to E, which is announcement, and I believe that we don't have any at this meeting, so I would like to move to F, which is the public comment. So, you may provide public comments via Zoom, or email questions, or public comments to plane@wayncounty.com. Please include your name with your comments. All public comments will be read into the record by the clerk. So if you have any questions at this time, you can please unmute.
And just so you know, President Langston, we didn't receive any public comments through, uh, the county email.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to say, uh, thank you for bringing me to the council, and giving me a chance to be a part of it, my first meeting.
You're more than welcome, we're really excited to have you. So last, I would like to go to G, which is adjournment. We have addressed all of our agenda items, and at this time, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Anyone move to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Motion received, all of those in favor, please say aye.
All right, good meeting, guys.
Thank you.
All right, have a good weekend, bye-bye.